All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Starting with the determination of the form, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven present and none absent.
And I do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being just as for all.
Okay, before we get into the approval of the agenda for the regular board meeting, there are a couple of things that we will do that are not a part of the official agenda. And that starts with a presentation. So do we want to go up there and do it, or where should we do it?
Probably the easiest would be right in front of you.
Right, isn't the easiest? So Howard and Deb, if you'd like to come up. Maybe we should stand by the microphone.
Sure.
Oh, that's right. I'll let you do the best. And Deb is, this is eight years from now and four years from now.
So Howard and Deb, here are some small tokens of appreciation of the school district for your time with us on the board. Should we have them open them first?
Yes.
So Deb, this is finishing, this is your last meeting after eight years serving on the board. You're the last member who is on the board, and I'm going to board. I have appreciated so much your thoughtfulness you bring to all our meetings. You are such a fantastic listener. And you always bring solid words of wisdom to the board meetings when you're here. And I just have appreciated so much working with you, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Howard, I feel like I've gotten 10 years of wisdom from you in four years. I just, I cannot tell you how much I'm going to miss having you on my left-hand side at a board meeting, being my clerk and knowing that I always have your steadfast, plain-spoken wisdom. It's just been tremendous working with you, and I can't say enough about how much I'm going to miss having you on the board. So thank you so much for your time with us.
And I just want to congratulate you on behalf of the Fairbowl Public School District for your service to kids, your infinite wisdom as you have traveled this journey with me on the school board, and I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate your leadership and the direction that you've given this district, so thank you.
Don't you have to say something?
Yeah.
No, no.
So in recognition of Howard and Deb's time with us and commemorating their service to the board in their last evening with us this evening, there's a cake in the back, and I was asked to push everybody in the room to go back there. So Kathy suggested she didn't want to take it home, so please do so. So the next item here is we'll have a truth and taxation presentation from Colleen Murdestorff before we begin the agenda of our regular board meeting. So I'll turn it over to Colleen.
I think Drew has this presentation. We'll give him a minute here to bring it up. Okay, this is the truth and taxation hearing. Tonight on the agenda, we have two things to discuss. We're going to talk about the 2014 payable 2015 levy, and we're here to talk about the school district portion. We do not address the city or the county. They each have their own separate tax hearings for that, so we're only talking about the school district portion. And then we also will discuss our budget for 1415. And if anybody has any questions, they are welcome to ask them. At the end of the presentation, we'll give you some time for questions, either from the school board or from the audience. We can take questions. Okay, let's move on to the next slide, Drew. Okay, in the general fund, we levy in three different, in the, just as general information, we levy in three different funds: the general fund, the community service fund, and the debt service fund. The final levy must be certified by the school board by December 29th, so we're here to do that tonight. We'll have the hearing, and then we'll ask the board to approve that tonight also. And then, just as a point of information, the levy that we're certifying is for taxes payable in calendar 2015. That becomes revenue for the school district in the 1516 school year, so we're talking about revenue for next school year. Okay, in the general fund, the levy for last year was 5.5 million, or a little bit over that. This year, we are recommending a 5.279 million levy. That's a net decrease of about 238,000. And some of the reasons for those decreases, our referendum went down by about 106, and that just means that the levy portion dropped a little bit. Our state aid actually went up on that. The reemployment insurance levy dropped by about 78,000, so we're catching up now from some years of cuts and having to lay people off and pay reemployment costs. That has now dropped. And then our health and safety levy dropped by about 82,000. We had projects that we were doing that now that has dropped down too. Couple minor increases in career and technical, that went up about 20,000, and our deferred maintenance went up about 11,000. Any questions on that general fund levy? Okay, the community service fund levy, last year was 359,000. This year, or for 2015, it's almost the same at about 349,000, so just a minor decrease of about 9,500. A couple areas where the levy did decrease is in early childhood family education, where it went down by about 6,400, and school age care also dropped about 6,400. And then our basic community ed went up about 2900. Our debt service fund levy saw the most change. Last year, or for 2014, our levy was 4.8 million. For 2015, the levy is a little over 2.6 million, and that's a decrease of 2.2 million. That is because our debt service payments of a little bit under $2 million dropped. And these were the bonds from 1995, $35 million in bonds that the districts sold to build Roosevelt and then to do minor or major remodeling projects at each of the buildings. So those are now paid off, so that levy does go down. And then we also have some excess funds in the debt redemption fund, so we're also dropping that by about 235,000. Also in debt service, as a point of information, we do have two bond issues remaining. One is the alternative facilities bonds for health and safety projects, and that final payment will be December 1st of 2019. And then we have the 15 million, or yeah, 15 million of school building bonds for deferred maintenance projects, and that final payment is February 1st of 2024. So for all of our levies, you can see that the total for last year, 2014, was $10,707,000, and for 2015, it's $8,243,000. So our levy did go down by about 2.4 million, or 23 percent. And I think most of you, if you're a homeowner in Rice County, saw that decrease in your school debt, school tax portion of your tax statement. Any questions on that levy part?
Thanks for including the debt service on those other.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, just a few slides then to talk about the budget for 1415. In the general fund, this is, these are all adopted budget figures. We have started out with a fund balance this year of a little under $10 million, 9.5 million. We have revenues at $46,866,000, expenditures at $46,534,000. So we're projecting that our fund balance will go ahead a little bit, up to about 9.9 million. The food service fund started out with about a $480,000 fund balance, revenues at just a little over $2 million, expenditures at 1.9 million, so that fund will probably also move ahead up to about 584,000. The community service fund started out with a fund balance of about 280,000. We're budgeting revenues at 1.668 million and expenditures at just a little over 1.6 million, so we also expect that fund balance to move ahead up to about 345,000. And then our debt service fund started out with a fund balance of a little over $1 million. We have revenues of about 4.8 million, expenditures of about 4.7 million, and so that fund balance will stay pretty much the same. It might move ahead a little bit up to about 1,086,000. And our last fund is a trust fund. We have a very small fund balance in there, about $6,500, and we're not projecting any revenues there. We actually are probably going to be closing that fund balance out this year and spending down that balance. Okay, if we look at our expenditures by fund, you can see that in the graph, the general fund by far is the largest fund. We spend about 85 percent of our budget out of the general fund. So I have a couple other slides that look at a little more detail of the general fund. First of all, we look at our revenues by source. So in the general fund, you can see that 79 percent of our money comes from the state, 4 percent from federal, 12 percent from local property tax levies, and then 5 percent other local. On the next slide, we look at the expenditure side of the equation, and about 80 percent of our expenses are on salaries and benefits, 13 on purchased services, 4 percent on supplies and materials, and 3 percent on capital expenditures. Okay, that's all I have. Are there any questions on any of that information, comments?
One question that we added that, what's that alternative, what project was that?
Indoor air quality, I believe. Some HVAC for indoor air quality.
Oh, that was the middle school. Okay, okay, gotcha.
I think what was surprising to me was how low federal has become. I think that was about a couple of that, maybe four years ago or so, wasn't it?
We've seen some decreases in our federal revenue, and one of the pieces that we, a lot of that is grant written dollars. So we used to have a 21st century grant. That was about 400,000, and that's a competitive grant. So that has dropped off for this year, but you know, that's something we can always reapply for. But federal money can, yes, tend to come and go, and then there's been some cuts at the federal level also, so.
Any other questions for Colleen?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us back to our regular agenda, where we need to first approve an agenda. I'm going to make the suggestion, since we have a guest here for one of the items, item 8B2, which is our financing of the building projects. We have a guest here from Ellers and Associates. So I'm going to suggest moving that up to take place after the consent agenda, out of respect for our visiting guest. Otherwise, I'd leave the agenda as written. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Up next, recognition and awards. I'll turn that over to Superintendent Sescar to talk about.
Yeah, we are very honored to have John Bellingham, one of our middle school teachers, and he was elected as chairman for the Minnesota Board of Teaching. This is the third year in a row that he's been elected chair for that organization, so that's great.
My daughter just had John last year and enjoyed him immensely, and I think I've heard through the grapevine that this may be his last year. He's retiring after many years of service, so we appreciate all the work he's done for our district and are thankful for this honor for him. Okay, up next is a community comment. This is time for any members of the community who have any comments or concerns to bring them to the board. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. Are there any community members who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on with the agenda. Up next is the consent agenda. Consent agendas are items that are approved with one motion. They are not debatable items, but an item can be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any board member. Are there any items that board members would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a vote call?
In alphabetical order, I will vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Chairman Ingraham?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman Sevens Hill in favor.
All right, thank you very much. And that brings us then to item 8B2, the financing options for the building projects. So Colleen, in.
I will just go ahead very quickly and introduce Jeff Sealy from Ellers and Associates. Ellers is our financial advisors, and so he has been helping us with, giving us some financing options for the district office adult education and cold storage facility building project that we're looking at. So I'll turn it over to Jeff, and he can present you with those options.
Thank you. Very nice to be here. This is kind of a follow-up to our discussion that we had several weeks ago, in which we explored some initial options for the projects, the adult basic education, the district office, and the storage facility. And we have a couple new options that we put together based on the feedback with you last time. So I believe you all electronically have revised lease purchase option document. Okay, so again, we started, page 1 through 4 is a narrative that explains the lease financing, and we covered that last time, and of course, what we call lease levy, which is simply the authority to levy a tax, a property tax, to pay, make the payments on the lease financing. So option one and option two are carryovers from our last discussion. So option one is on page 5 through 8, and basically you would be financing the full cost of the adult basic education addition, financing the full cost, and using your levy authority to raise the amount of money needed for the payments. District office addition, you would fully finance it, however, you do not have authority to levy a lease for that. So in any of these options, there would not be that authority in any of the options. And then the storage facility, finance full cost of the project, and then levy for it. So on page 5, these are all kind of the same format. We start with the adult basic education. You can see, there's three charts. The upper left basically shows you the amount of money that you need and where the money is going, and you can see a line in there called other district funds. You would be financing the full cost of projects, so that's zero. With any of the lease levy authority leases, we're using a 15-year payment schedule because that is what MDE will authorize. With that comes about 3.5 percent, and that's a little high. We have cushioned a little bit. So your annual payments would be about $198,000 on that. And then the lower left has the tax impact chart, just for this part of the project. So the page 6, we lay out the lease for the district office, and again, we finance full cost. There is no leasing authority, that's why there's no chart in the lower left, and we would reduce that to a 10-year principal and interest payment, simply because you don't need MDE's approval for the 15-year on it. So that would reduce your overall interest cost on the project, reducing it from 15 to 10. So about $285,000 is the payments. And with reducing it to 10-year, we're using a 3 percent interest rate, because the shorter it is, the lower the interest rate. And then page 7 shows the storage facility. Again, you can see it's a 15-year, $32,000 roughly is the annual payment, and then the levy impact. But page 8 puts it all together, and there's several columns there. Under the adult basic education, what I did is I laid out the old facility and what it is costing in a tax impact per various market values. And then next, I laid out the new facility or the finance payment, annual finance payment on it. And far-right column has the net impact. You can see there's a slight tax increase if you finance the full amount of these particular projects. For example, on a $100,000 home, it's a dollar increase per year, $150,000 is $2, and so forth. So this particular option has a very slight tax increase. Now, one thing to keep in mind with all these options is, for pay 16, this would go in effect for pay 16, you will have the old payments, the rental payments you're paying on these facilities now, and the levy authority for it. You could also have the new levy authority for the new facilities, so you'll actually have a larger end tax impact for that one year. Okay, so what you might want to consider is actually paying for the lease payments for the new facilities for that one year out of district funds, so you get this net tax impact regardless of which option you choose. So you have that one-year overlap for pay 16. So then on page 9, this is the adult basic education with an $800,000 district contribution. In our words, you're putting forth $800,000 of the district funds to reduce the amount that you will finance. And you can see that it drops the annual payments to about $129,000, and it drops the tax impact. The district office, option 2, again, an $800,000 district contribution on this option. Now, one thing to note, since there is not a levy, any levy authority with the district office, you could change that district contribution to any amount, and of course, it won't have any impact on levy because you aren't levying to make those payments. But for simplistic sake, in what we discussed, what we're doing is we're matching the contribution on the AVE addition and the district office addition. And then page 11 shows, again, the storage, and that's going to show, be the same for every option. You're basically financing the full amount and levying for the payments. So the net effect on page 12, you can see, is a slight decrease. For a $100,000 home, you have a drop of a dollar, and say for a $150,000 home, you have a drop of $2. So moving on to option 3, these two we discussed before, 1 and 2. Option 3 is one that you requested. It's what we would call the tax-neutral option. We tried to figure out what contribution you would have to make out of your district funds to make it a zero or no tax increase. So it came out to be about $450,000 district contribution. So with that, we applied the $450,000 to both the adult basic ed and the district office, and the net impact is on page 16. You can see that that zeros out the tax impact. Again, if you would levy for both the old and the new, for that one year, it overlaps. You would have a tax impact just for that one year, but we're assuming that you'll address that and look at options for maintaining tax-neutral, if that was the option that you were looking at. And then option 4 goes in between the tax-neutral, the 4 and 50, and the $800,000 contribution puts it a total at 1.2 or $600,000 for both the adult basic education and the district office. And you can see on the last page, page 20, it's a slight decrease, no change for a $100,000 house and a subtraction of $1 for a $150,000 home. So with any of these options, you can see the swing in the tax impact is small, but the concepts are there. You know, with one, you get a little bit of an increase, you finance everything. With option 2, you get a little larger decrease, but you're financing more of it through district contribution. The third one is trying to keep it tax-neutral, and the fourth is somewhere in between option 2 and 3. I went through this quick, but I know we spent quite a bit of time last time on it, so any questions?
Questions, yeah, please.
Oh, yeah, on the interest rate, you quoted like 3.5 and 3. Realistically, what do you think we'll get?
Well, if we were to sell it now, you'd probably be 3.15 to 3.25 on a 15-year. So it is cushioned a little bit, but what the, the reason we put some basis points in there is the market may change a little bit between now and when we actually finance the projects.
And if this is approved tonight, when we, what, sell the bonds, whatever, when?
Yes, we're assuming February 1st on all these for a closing date. That would presume that if you approved it tonight, we move forward right away and move the process along. Essentially, we could, we could look at it and delay it until you actually needed the money. The advantage of that, and I'm not sure when the projects would start, but the advantage of that is you remove several months' worth of interest. In other words, you want to issue the bonds and hold the money for a number of months before you need it. You time it to coincide with your construction draws and so forth. However, the longer you wait, the greater chance that that interest rate may fluctuate, either up or down, but we always play the odds, and with a period of low interest rates like we're in, if interest rates move, the odds are they're going to creep up as opposed to creep down since we're in a low-interest-rate market.
When we, if we lock in, but do we, if it goes lower, can we re-lock or not? Can't you do that?
No, once, once you accept the proposals, then that's the rate that you'll have.
Other questions for Jeff?
Well, can we look at the number if we were to, so if we were to pay the lease levy for that year, is that basically just adding the three payments on each of, I mean, we look at the different options and we just add those together?
Yes, you just add across that line, and that would be your cash.
For that year, the overlapping.
Yeah, and the increase, of course, would be as if you just add the new facility
A point of knowledge, or whether or not order, but the finance, the committee approved option 2, I believe, is that?
Oh, okay.
The finance committee, the discussion on Monday, I think.
Recommendation was option 2?
Option 2, was that, I think that's, it was a long discussion and a lot of reasons for that, too.
It was a suggestion.
A suggestion.
Suggestion, yes, thank you.
It's always a recommendation.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I think one of the comments I thought was helpful was that this is a time when several things are coming together to enable us to do the plan, one being that we do have some fine- One being that we do have some financial stability and we have, we can access some funds and the leases are coming up. And we have leadership in the school districts that all these pieces are coming together and it could be rare that we would have that opportunity again in the near future to move forward at some point like this. I thought it was a wise comment, wasn't it?
Any other questions?
So, uh, uh, tonight we're looking to approve one of these options. I guess we could modify one of these options if we chose, the differences between these is the size of that down payment. So the board could specify different down payment size, sort of, would it choose to in a very, fairly simple way. And I think based upon our previous discussions, that would be the only modification I would, I would see coming from this board is perhaps a, a different size of, of that potential down payment. So, uh, why don't we start with a, a motion and then we can discuss that motion on, on one of these options? If somebody at this time would like to make a motion for one of these.
I'd like to make a motion for option two.
We have a motion for option two?
Could you explain what option two is for the audience?
Yes, option two is a financing of the district. Uh, let me get back to the different options here. So there are four options in front of the board. All of them finance an adult basic education addition at the high school, district office addition at the middle school and a storage facility. Do we have a location of where that would be?
ALC.
Uh, out by the, the area learning center. The differences between these options is in the amount of down payment the district will put in from its general fund. Option two puts in the largest down payment in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars for the adult basic ed addition and eight hundred thousand dollars for the district office addition for a total of one point six million in down payment. And I think we have a motion for option two. Is there a second to that motion?
Or second?
We have a motion and a second. So let's open that up for discussion then and see where people are.
Please. Yeah, with option two and I, Howard and Yvette, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's minimal interest. I think it's the least interest we pay. And it's also minimizes the amount of Kevin's budget. Todd, you can again correct me if I'm wrong.
I might rephrase that. It's the minimum impact on Kevin's budget.
Impact, that's right.
Gets him the largest budget.
Right, that's right, yeah, yeah. So it's, I think it accomplishes what we want in this. We, we have a permanent place to meet with the district office or will or might. Also, in my opinion, it gets us out of, in my opinion, a substandard billing for town square. So I, I guess that's my comments.
Okay, and I'm just going to clarify something you said, Richard. You said it minimizes the impact on Kevin's budget, which is sort of colloquial for those watching, you might, it's not really Kevin's budget.
Right.
It's the facility's budget.
It's silty.
And so it's the budget which we, which, which we do repair every single year. And that's the budget that will be impacted by some of these payments. And as you said, the payments are the smallest for, for the option that, that is before us.
Um, I have a question on the deferring the levy, or the delaying the lease levy assessment. Did you guys discuss that at the finance, finance meeting?
The delay? No, we haven't talked about that yet. Well, we did a little bit.
Little bit.
Commented with trying to, if it's a one point six million dollars, using that money as part of that role in dollar amount.
So there wouldn't be an additional amount coming from the, the general fund in order to, to bridge that gap here?
Yeah, if you want to put limitations on this, yeah. We haven't discussed all of that yet.
Okay, so that's.
We, the implication was that one point six PR max out of the, out of the fund balance.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
I have to say that I probably will not vote for that motion. I don't think it's any surprise that I still am struggling with using unappropriated fund balance. How healthy it is, I understand that, for construction of a facility. When in fact, in principle, I think that's supposed to be for instructional purposes. In a, you know, option number one, it is not a significant tax impact to the taxpayers. I know the interest is a little bit higher, but from the standpoint of still taking money out of a unappropriated fund balance that should be for instructional purposes. And I think we have a number of things in this district where we could be spending that dollar. And I'm not opposed to the con, the, the construction. I certainly support that. But I'm just not in a position as a matter of principle to support taking money out of the general fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I'd like to go on record as favoring option number four. I share Mr. Robishaw's concern about using general fund monies for facilities. However, the opportunity to accomplish these projects, provide our district with superior facilities and still retain a good fund balance appeals to me greatly while reducing the tax burden on our citizens. So my choice would be option four, which for the people who don't have all those papers in front of you, ask for a six hundred thousand dollar contribution on the adult basic ed building and a six hundred thousand dollar contribution from the general fund for the district office. By reducing that from the option two where it's an eight hundred thousand dollar figure for each of those parts of this proposal, I think we have a greater assurance that we will have sufficient funds in the general fund to meet any number of instructional needs in this district that have not been met or who had been reduced in past years and not restored or may come to the fore as we, you know, engage with our changing demographics and our, and possible changing needs. So with the thought of having a long-term tax reduction for the community, improving facilities for adult basic ed and the district office and using our available funds most efficiently, I have to state my opposition to option two, but a willingness to consider option four.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Other comments?
So I will speak in favor of option two for two reasons. The first is that we have some, I think, very financial savvy people on our finance committee and they've looked at it at the last two meetings in quite depth. And both times they came to the conclusion that it was, made good sense for us to go with the one point six million down payment. That also freed up some money, which may eventually mean being able to hire a couple of extra teachers. My second reason is because the interest saved over option one where we pay nothing down is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, almost three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars over the period. And over option four, it's two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And I think that's money that does go for use of education kits.
Can I ask for clarification, Howard?
Yeah.
Say buddy to hire more teachers. I don't follow that. I'm sorry.
I have to kind of review what was said at the finance meeting.
I can attempt to.
Yeah, go ahead.
If we have this higher interest rate and a higher payment out of the capital funds, we would be taking that out of our ability to future funding as, as we're going forward. So by making a higher down payment, we're actually allowing a freedom of funds. We might increase our fund balance. Whereas if we don't do it upfront, we're going to pay for it anyway, I guess, is what the finance committee summed up when they looked at the numbers. If that, if I'm speaking clear about that, maybe I'm not.
Okay.
You're a financial person, but if you look at the interest, the differences in the interest and the difference in the annual payments.
I understand the difference in the interest and the annual payment, but I'm still not connecting how that's going to be allowing us to hire more teachers for some of the educational programs that we have.
Maybe I can clarify a little bit. The finance committee, the operating capital fund can only be used for bricks and mortar. So when you have a two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar amount that you're pulling out of operating capital versus if you put a down payment, you free up about a hundred thousand dollars of that operating capital to be general fund money. So that, it's not quite two teachers, probably one and a half teachers, but you free up general fund money as a result of not putting money to the operating capital. So it does help instructional.
Okay, how much per year?
Every year, it's about, well, it'd be that, once you save it, it's that same amount all the time. So you have that a hundred thousand dollars. If you, if you go with the zero payment down, then you have two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of operating capital, operating capital you pay every year. If you go with the eight hundred thousand dollars or the one point six down, then you're coming out of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars or whatever it is from operating capital. So the difference is about a hundred thousand dollars.
Between, yes, but at least in my mind, we're in a posi, I'm, I'm looking at a position between one point six million down and one point two million down. How much can you calculate? Can you calculate how much that might free up within the annual general fund?
I think the number's more like twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, I think it was out of twenty-five or thirty thousand. You said option four, right, Tom?
That's the one that appeals to me.
That one is, operating capital is two hundred and thirty-two thousand that you'd have to designate as operating capital. And then that difference from option two is, whatever that is, minus, or is it? Two thirty-two and it's not very much, is it?
Oh, it's one twenty nine plus one maybe. Thirty-two.
Well, it'd be about half.
About fifty thousand?
Yeah, about fifty thousand or so.
Yeah, I think it's about fifty.
Okay.
I'll write it down and come up with an answer.
That's, that's fine, but.
It would be less than the first.
No, and, and, and I can certainly see that between zero and one point six, that would make a substantial difference. But I, I haven't heard anybody speaking of zero, except perhaps Mr. Robishaw, he's, if I'm interpreting what you're saying. In the discussions, the financial discussions, there's, there seems to be some financial sense to this whole proposal in my mind. Especially in the area of reducing taxpayer levy, although it is not any sort of huge amount. Were there any instructional discussions that were a part of that? A, a proposal that makes financial sense may not make perfect instructional sense because one point six million dollars spent out of the general fund could purchase some substantial instructional benefits. And any money that is spent from the general fund will then no longer be available for those instructional, purely instructional benefits. And so I, as part of the finance, has there been any instructional imagineering going on in terms of what the?
We can talk philosophically and probably repeat the same thing Jason said, but when we do our budgets, when we budget for expenditures, our ongoing expenditures, we look at the revenues that are coming in. We don't look at the fund balance. In fact, I don't know how many, have we ever looked at the fund balance? No. We look at the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out in the, in the fall and that's how we balance our budgets. Now, the, and again, help me, Colleen, with this. I need some help. The fund balance, the main purpose for the fund balance are, in my, my history of finances, has been for one-time expenditures and it would be for emergency funds, things like that. If a boiler happens to go out, we need that money in, in the bank for that whole thing. And certainly for some, some pilot programs too. I would say that's another great fun, use of fund balance.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to use the fund balance to fund ongoing expenses because it's like using your savings account and make your mortgage payment. Eventually it's going to run out.
Can I bring up a, an incident from some years ago, which some of you may not have been involved in, but it, it, it's part of my thinking process? A few years ago, we needed to resurface the track at Bruce Smith Field. And I believe the amount allocated for that was somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's just a ballpark memory and an old man's memory. Where did that money come from? Did that come out of the general fund?
No, that came out of the fifteen million dollar bond. That was a deferred maintenance item out of the fifteen million dollar bond projects.
I think it's worth noting though, on that same, if I can just interject here a little bit, that when we, this is again history. I wasn't here when he did the bonds. There's fifteen million dollars that he allocated, but I think the proposal was actually thirty. So there is fifteen million dollars worth of projects that are out there that are still on that list that haven't been completed.
No, and as I expect so, we've, we've had some tough financial times, even though we have been blessed with a couple of referendums over the last twenty years. My concern is that there are some issues, not necessarily, I'm not talking ongoing positions and that sort of thing, but there, I think there are some investments that might be made out of that general fund that I'm, and, and I, and be the last person to question your financial wisdom because you've done an incredible job. I really thank you for all that effort over the years. But it is my concern that we have the funds available to do what's needed to provide a comprehensive, first-class, world-class education for our students. And I see some things that are, for the lack of a better word, a competition in the big nine or big twelve or whatever we're calling ourselves. Have that we do not and I would like to try and find ways to make those happen. And I'm looking at a new form of term and that's, that's the long-range vision. And what makes me hesitate to be in just silent or quick support of this is I don't know. I want to make sure we have the money.
And I think those things aren't mutually exclusive. I think by doing the one point six million or the one point two or whatever figure you decide on, there's still, we're still very healthy and have the ability to do some of those things with our fund balance beyond the one point six.
What I'm, I'm anxious to hear about is proposals to do some of them.
They'll be coming this spring.
Colleen, how well, how well, what percentage will we have as a reserve in our fund balance if we do the one point six million?
It'll still be over seventeen. I think it was seventeen and a half.
And what do the auditors, what do the auditors suggest we have?
Oh, twelve to sixteen.
And would be seventeen and a half?
Mm-hmm, and our fund balance policy is nine and a half, so we're.
What do you see fund balance doing under the proposed budget for the next year?
Well, we're definitely, well, I shouldn't say that, I guess. My projections are that we'll move ahead at the end of this year because our enrollment is up quite a bit. You know, we're up eighty kids probably at least, if not closer to a hundred.
So we'll continue to increase our fund balance?
I don't, yes, yes. We'll increase it at the end of this year. And then depending on all of the proposals that we are, that you'll be asked to look at this spring, you know, you'll have to pick and choose. I don't think we'll have enough to fund everything, but you know, if our enrollment holds steady, we'll have some ability to add some of those new programs for next year.
And just remember, when you do the projections for the revenues, when you're looking at the programs, it's based on our student count. So the enrollment's going to be very important when you start looking at those new programs and some of those proposals that are coming forward.
You know, again, the best use of fund balance is on one-time costs. So if we have some needs to help those programs get implemented, one-time cost needs, those are good things to spend those dollars on to implement instructional activities.
I'm still for saving interest.
Me too.
I'll, I'll say, uh, so, so my view on this has been that, uh, the building project in sense, regardless of any of these four options makes financial sense to this, this district. If all four of them make sense, I would, I would be supportive of, of any of them if I thought the board could be unanimous on, on one of them. Because I think the project simply makes financial sense to the district and therefore makes educational sense to the district. We are, part of our job is to be good stewards of, of the resources given to us. And I think that this accomplishes that and therefore will help us to accomplish educational goals in, in the long term of the district. Having said that, to express my preferences, I also think that we do down payments for, for a variety of, of reasons when, when you're, when you're able to do so. One of which are the savings and interest that you get. And, and in this particular case, also a reduction in, in some of the payments and particularly the, the, almost a hundred thousand dollars difference versus no down payment between the smallest and the largest down payment. Between no down payment and the largest down payment we're talking about, I should. Between no down payment and the largest down payment we're talking about, I should say, to that facilities budget. And, and that is money that gets spent every single year to keep our, our facilities across the district for our kids up to speed. And, and I think that makes plenty of sense for us to do. So my preference is, is to do option number two. Having said that, I think, although we've already spoken as a board that, and, and had a unanimous approval of the projects, I, I would like very much for us to speak with one voice, if possible, though I don't think it's necessary. Sometimes disagreements just happen, and they're, they're well-founded and well-intentioned by all those involved. And so if this is not a unanimous vote, I think that's just fine. So, so I would vote to support option two unless I hear from the board that, that there could be some consensus around one of these other options, whether or not that's option four, or option two, or option one. A sense of, so I might be interested in a sense of what, what options people might support in order to choose for myself, whether or not to support option two or to, or to not support it so that we can move on to another option that might gain more support from the board. I'm certainly fine with option number four. I get less interested in options three and, and one. I think they do less for us in terms of that down payment, but as I said, though, I would support them because I believe in the project. I don't know if anybody else has an interest in, in, in thinking through those, or if, or if we believe strongly enough in option two. But I'm interested to hear from the rest of the board on, on that matter.
Chair, you do have a motion on the table as well, so you have to act on that before you consider any other options. And I'm all in favor of, you know, saving interest, there's absolutely no doubt about that. The tax impact, on number one, is, is not significant. I also wanna talk, you know, follow up on what Mr. Casper is talking about. That, you know, I'm also on this board for educational purposes, and that's what we can do for students, and how we can address programs for students. I have sat in education on both sides of the table for years. And I also understand the reason not to go into the general fund, fund balance for ongoing expenses. I respect that, I appreciate that. But I've also sat in an educator's chair where the fund balance was almost non-existent. We don't know what the legislature's gonna do this coming legislative session. We've had a very supportive legislature over the last couple of years, but we don't know what's gonna happen with the changes in the House leadership and the Senate leadership when it comes to school finances. Yes, our enrollment is very high at this point, but I think we were in a position in this district a few years ago where we looked at that fund balance and spent it down to nothing almost. And I'm very concerned about that, because that's gonna be devastating for all educational programs in this district, not just for one or two. So yes, I'm very supportive of saving interest rates, but three hundred thousand dollars in a budget of four hundred, or forty million dollars? What's the significance of that? When it comes to, my purpose of being on this board is what we can do for kids and learning, and what that outcome should be for those students, so. Mr. Chair, in response to it, and that, you're not gonna get a unanimous vote on any options, so.
I, I just wanna highlight, 'cause I wanna be clear. You've said many times that your interest is, is what's best for our kids, and, and I'm sure that's true for everyone up here.
Thank you. I'm not saying that's not the case, Jason.
I understand, I just wanna be clear on that, that I feel that way too. And I think everybody acting on this, this-
I did not mean that to offend anybody else on this board, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask Mr. Robishoff a question? Does that mean you're not in favor of paying anything down?
That's right.
Option four, option four was not, wasn't-
That's right. Anything out of the unreserved fund balance is not an option for me.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I support option two, I think I minimize the interest and the payment out of operating capital. Similarly, I would worry about a future where we're in financial straits and we're having to make that higher payment every month towards the building. I mean, I would rather situate ourselves in our current environment where we have a lower payment out of the operating capital. So that's how I see it, makes me more nervous to increase that interest and increase that payment out of the operating capital. And I, I fully agree with you, I'm very excited about the opportunities that we have coming forward with the Yale program. And it might take, you know, an investment in some curriculum or, you know, some software. But I think financially, that fund balance in some ways is taxpayer money, and I know that our main job, I agree with you, is having great schools for our kids, but I also have to have some financial responsibility minimizing the interest that we're paying. So that's why I would support option two.
Mr. Chair, I'll put my two cents in also. I also agree with option two a lot for that operating capital. I really don't, or hope, that the people that are sitting up here in the future don't have to ask for another fifteen million dollar referendum to fix our schools. You know, that was wonderful that the community stepped up and did that. But we're in a situation where we can make a difference so that our operating capital doesn't have to, you know, be negative and go out and ask for more money to make our schools usable. Not, you know, if we wanna build something new or anything like that, just to keep them so that we can have our kids go to school to learn. So I, I'm in support of it partly for that, and it will still give our kids great opportunities. Plus, we have to worry about our adult educator, you know, adult basic ed, those are our responsibility too, to help those people become better citizens. You know, it's not just kids always in the community, it, the parents of these children can better themselves. That just gives their kids more incentive to better themselves also.
Well, I wish I had a crystal ball to know whether we'd have a high amount of unexpected expenses in the next few years. That said, I'm all in favor of compromise, but at the same time, like you said, Jason, the, the whole building project makes common sense to own rather than to lease. But I still think that the down payment now, with this, leaving us with a seventeen percent fund reserve, gives us some level of comfort. Not a guarantee that we won't have to come back someday and make cuts if we have unexpected expenses. But right now, it seems, it seems to be a good decision.
Again, I'll state, I'm in favor of option two. I know with the finance committee, we've really studied this, and I've had a couple meetings with Colleen and Todd to go over the figures, and, and I believe they're correct. I will support option two. Plus, I think we just had a presentation, Colleen, in two thousand nineteen, a bond will be coming off, and what will that do?
That will probably drop our, I don't have the bond schedule in front of me, but the way that, that these two last bond issues were structured is that the one that's coming off in two thousand nineteen will actually have a tax decrease a year or two ahead of that, because the payment's gonna drop. And then the next, when that goes off a year or two ahead of that, it's structured so that, that two, I think we'll have a two million dollar levy till it gets paid off in two thousand twenty-four. So, right now, we're about three million, it'll drop down to two million in a couple years, and then it'll drop, that'll stay there until two thousand twenty-four. So it'll have a similar impact to what you're having this year at the end of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. And going back to what Howard said, it's, you know, it's cheaper to buy than the rent. And it makes financial sense, we still have a large fund balance, and again, I think we need facilities, decent facilities. And I need, especially the district office, I think it should be attached to a school. And we happen to, you know, middle school, we have a land, we don't have to buy the land, it's already ours, so I'll be supporting option two.
Well, I thank everyone for expressing their thoughts on this. It can sometimes be difficult when, when we have real disagreements in, in philosophy, even though we are all trying to do what's, what's best for the district. If there aren't any other comments at this point, I think we'll go ahead and take action on this item. Mr. Clerk, please.
Okay, let me read the motion.
So the motion is to support option two, and I'll describe that. Option two finances the, the addition of an adult basic education facility at the high school with an eight hundred thousand dollar down payment coming from the undesigned general fund. It also finances the district office addition at the middle school in the amount of, with an eight hundred thousand dollar down payment from the undesigned general fund. And then the financing of a storage facility, which will be built at the area learning center.
Okay. All right, in alphabetical order, Mr. Chairman, I will vote aye. Tom Casper?
No.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robishow?
No.
Jason Ingraham?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, it is five in favor and two against.
All right, thank you all very much. Okay. Moving along with our agenda, we had no curriculum committee meeting this past month, so there is not a report on that. But we do have a technology, technology update from Colleen Cardeno.
Good evening. Our curriculum advisory committee can, was canceled on Monday night because many of our staff members, twelve of them in fact, attended the TIES conference. And the TIES is an educational technology conferences, conference. It was a two-day conference in which they had the opportunity to attend conferences or workshops in the area of schoolology, one-to-one iPads, gamification, Google Apps, and just a variety of, of different opportunities. So many of us went, it was, it was amazing to see and to have conversations with other schools, to hear what's going on in technology across the nation. It was, it was a great workshop for all, I have to be honest with you. The plan is now to come back and share with our staff what we've learned. Several staffs will be sharing their information during staff meetings, and the rest of us will be doing it during staff development days. The other thing that we are working on in technology is we're looking at the summer training opportunities. We think that we'll be doing a training in June for our staff, and we hope to be to, doing an additional training in August again this year. And so as we get ready to roll out the one-to-one, we're really trying to get our staff prepared to integrate our technology within our curriculums. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that brings us to policy. Do we have a policy committee report this evening?
Wait a couple, sir. We look at the discipline policy and we are still working on that, we're getting closer to it, so we'll bring hopefully the first reading in January.
Okay, all right. There is a policy committee meeting scheduled in front of you as a report. If there aren't any questions on that, we'll move along to finance.
Well, we spent the majority of the meeting discussing the options that were put in front of us, and we also reviewed a couple requests from Cheryl, which we brought to your attention later in the agenda.
That was, that was pretty much it, it was dominated by the facilities.
Yep, and the levy certification.
And the levy.
Okay. All right, well, that then brings us to item eight B one, the two thousand fourteen payable, two thousand fifteen levy certification. Does Colleen wanna tell us about that?
Just need to vote.
Okay, so now we're at the point in the levy certification process, we had the hearing earlier this evening, so we would ask that you would just approve those levy amounts as the final levy amounts for taxes payable in two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
The motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight B three, a request to increase speech-language assistance time.
Good evening, excuse me. As you have in front of you on your handouts, we have an increase of students at our early childhood special education programs and our increased numbers in students needing speech-language services. At this time, we don't have enough speech-language pathology, pathology time to serve those students that are newly identified. So I'm requesting that we increase the funding in order to hire a special education speech-language assistant to help with serve some of our students at McKinley.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
What age group is this?
Early childhood special education, so ages three to five.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And so then we have item eight B four, consider approval for additional special ed non-licensed staff at McKinley.
Right, again, our early childhood numbers are, have really increased, and we are experiencing numbers at this time of the year that we usually see later in the year. And so our staff are, are working very hard, and, but we are also needing more space for, for students to enter, or classroom space in order to enter, enter into programming. Therefore, we're asking for a paraprofessional to help with an addition of a three-day-a-week program for, to meet our students in a special education-only classroom. Our integrated classrooms are full at this time, and so the only place that we can serve students in a preschool setting is in an early childhood special ed classroom. The second one is to add a couple of paraprofessionals to our ECSE classroom that, that meets the needs of our students on the autism spectrum, our youngest children ages two through five. Those students usually need a, a little more assistance than many of our other students that are, are developmentally delayed at that level.
Uh, yeah, we do not yet have a motion. Say again, motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you very much, Charlie.
Thank you.
Up next, we have item eight C, the budget, including a few things. An enrollment report, which shows numbers are wholly steady, good news for the district. If there's no questions on that, there's no financial report this evening, and we have no gifts or donations to, to consider this evening. And that, so that brings us to the compulsory instruction compliance data report, the homeschool program. Is there someone who wants to tell us about that?
Yeah, and I can help you with that too, it's with the graph. The school year is the fourteen, fifteen school year, and this is what Kathy puts together for our homeschool and all the kids who in our district that go to non-public schools, like the BA and Lutheran School. So the age levels are the second column, five through eighteen. And then the students that go to traditional non-public schools are there, and we, they are all in compliance. And then the next column, the fourth column, some of you are curious about the homeschool students, we have about a hundred and sixteen homeschool kids in our district. And again, Kathy does a great job of making sure that all of her work is complete, and they are all in compliance. So we just need the approval from the board to- So, we just need the approval from the board to send this to MDE to show that we are in compliance. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't, okay. I just report, all right.
It's just a report, okay? Yeah, it says action here, but you don't need an action.
No.
Okay, any questions on that item before we move along? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the insurance. Other committee reports, number nine, starting with the insurance committee?
No report.
No report, okay. Wellness committee, no report. Community Ed and Marie have reported.
Good evening, there's two pieces of good news from community education. One is we did receive again our Office of Refugee and Resettlement grant from the Department of Human Services. This helps establish after-school programming for our newest to country. So we have about twenty-five to thirty students that will serve between the middle and high school and those who have been here one year or less in the country. So, we're working with Sam Oak, our EL coordinator, to make sure that programming is seamless, and will be starting in January. The second piece of good news is Faribault Public Schools Adult Basic Education has been selected for a pilot program for the adult diploma. That is, we did receive some funding through the Department of Education, and it is really to build steps toward offering adults in our community a diploma option. So, not just a GED exists anymore, but we will be able to build a diploma option for those who are aging out of our system, so the ALC or the high school, without graduating. So there will be a credit option, but it will also consist of a competency-based model as well. So, anyone actually who can meet the eligibility requirements and do the work can successfully pass all of the four content domains of language arts, math, social studies, and science will receive a Department of Education-issued diploma. And we will be talking about how that translates into a Faribault Public Schools diploma. So it's a very exciting time. We have lots of individuals in our community that can take advantage of that, so we're thrilled. That's it.
Any questions for Ann Marie? All right, thank you very much. Now, it says here there's a facility report from Kevin Hildebrand.
Yeah, Kevin, yeah, he can't make it. He had a conflict tonight, so.
All right.
Do we have any facilities to speak up?
It would just be an update on the building.
That's probably it, just the A B. And we've been going back and forth with it. If you want a quick update of the design, we're at that point now where we're meeting with cabinet, and we're meeting with the users of the facility and trying to get their feedback on what the design's going to look like, so.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. Next, item ten, other matters. Consider approval of robotics coach contract for Jason Ingraham. Obviously, all the abstaining from this vote.
Removed.
Second.
And a second, is there any discussion on this item?
We want to pass this quick before you change your mind.
I'd like to get like a little advertising from Jason on the program, so it's a little PR.
I think demonstration.
A demonstration.
At the next meeting, we'll do a demonstration. I'm happy to say something about the program. I'm really excited about it. It's our first year of having a robotics team. It's part of a larger organization called First Robotics, which is a nationwide organization. There's something probably like five thousand teams nationwide, and I think a couple hundred teams here in Minnesota, usually based in high schools, though they don't need to be. We're based at Faribault High School. It's a program that starts in January. We start, we've been meeting to give the kids some skills. Then in January, we start the building of a robot, and then there's a competition at the beginning of April. And these are fairly large and sophisticated robots. It's like a hundred and twenty-pound robot that is well-controlled and needs lots of various pieces to it. For our first year, I'm really excited about the size of the group. We have roughly twenty students who have signed up for it. So I'm just really excited to work with them, and yeah, that's the project.
A little background too, I just thank Jason for taking this on too. It's always hard to start a program regardless of what it is at the first part of the year, and Jason's been terrific. And just a little recognition too to Phil Johnson, who's really done a lot behind the scenes to help us out. And of course, Steve Oritz has also done some really good things.
Thank you for mentioning those two names, very important to get into. And we've also had, as you mentioned, really great support from local manufacturers. MRG, K and G, Mercury have all stepped forward to be a part of the team, both with some financial support and some mentors as well. So, it's been a terrific project, and I'm excited to be a part of it, assuming that you approve.
Is that discussion?
Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call so we can know.
Mr. Chairman, I will vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robisho?
Aye.
And Chairman Ingraham abstaining. So, Mr. Chairman, it is six-year-old in favor.
All right, thank you very much. And up next is item ten B, approval of agreement between school district, independent school district six-five-six, and IU OE Local Set Number Seventy for custodians and engineers. Who wants to speak to that?
I'll start with it. If you have questions, you can certainly ask Nicole, she's here tonight. And we, Nicole did a great job with this piece and stuck within the parameters of the board set for negotiating. And this has been a contract that's been a long time negotiating, so I just want to let you know that there's a lot of hard work put into this contract. Any questions, feel free to ask probably Nicole more than me.
I have one question. I know that we had an issue from our last finding, I forget what the study is called, but sort of gender equality in pay between male-dominated and female-dominated areas of the district. And there was an issue related to how many steps and lanes there were. So, just sort of for confirmation that this contract is going to be consistent with the other things we've done, that we'll end up in compliance with this item.
That's correct. That's the pay equity report is what you're referring to.
Yep, that's what, thank you very much.
This settlement neither harms or helps our pay equity moving forward because we didn't really, we didn't make any changes to their actual structure. The changes that we made were in more of our female-dominated employment contracts.
So we will be in compliance, but it will be because of the contracts that were for the other areas, not because of this one. Are the others came in compliance with this one, is that my understanding?
That's true. We are working with the state to, we have a couple more baby steps we need to get through. But yes, once we're all, once we're all done with all of our negotiations, we will be in compliance.
All right, great, thank you.
What do we have budgeted for this two-year? What was our budget again?
Six percent for two years.
And my reading is it's seven point zero nine, right?
That's correct.
Over, so we're over budgeted?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as proposed.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? All right, hearing done, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
I will vote aye. Tom Casper?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Yvette Martholler?
Aye.
Richard Olson?
No.
Jerry Robisho?
Aye.
And Chairman Ingraham?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, six-one in favor.
All right, thank you all, and thank you very much to the negotiation team. I know it was a lengthy negotiation, so I appreciate the hard work that was put into that process. So, up next, we have a couple of items related to the gymnastics program, starting with the dissolution of the cooperative sponsorship 2014-2015 for gymnastics. So, Superintendent Sescr, do you want to tell us a little bit about what this is about?
Yeah, it's pretty much a formality. You have to dissolve the co-op sponsorship before doing a new co-op sponsorship. The only difference is I don't believe Shattuck is on the second one just because we don't have any participants.
Right, okay. All right, so in essence, what we're doing here is removing Shattuck because they don't have any participants at this moment. So we need to dissolve the current one and then approve a new one. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the dissolution of the cooperative sponsorship for 2014-2015.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the dissolution of the cooperative sponsorship. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And so up next is the approval of the application for cooperative sponsorship 2015-2016 for the girls gymnastics program, this one being different only in that it does not include Shattuck St. Mary's. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, I'll let Kathy sort that out. Any further discussion on this item?
Go gymnastics.
Go gymnastics. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, and then finally, on other matters, the approval of a superintendent evaluation report. So we talked about this in closed session last time and went over the evaluation of our superintendent. What you're looking at here is a draft of an evaluation which you saw in that closed session and now is made public. And we'd be looking for approval on this statement this evening.
I move approval.
So, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on this item? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all very much, and thank you very much to Superintendent Sescr for the hard work he's putting with our district.
Thank you.
That brings us to other items of information. We have no student representative this evening, so that brings us to school board members. Any items of information from school board members?
I just want to follow up. I've had the honor to sit between these two board members over the last year, and I just want to ask a favor, anybody who could bring extra pencils, I'd really appreciate it because I borrowed from Howard. It has been a very high honor to serve with you two. I know that I talked to Howard initially about running for the school board, and he said, "What does that take?" And I said, "Oh, one board meeting a month." And it's been a great honor of serving with you over the last four years. You two are definitely dedicated to the students in this district, and I appreciate and respect all you've done and how you provided that leadership. So, as a fellow board member, thank you very much. You will definitely be missed on the board.
Appreciate it, Jerry.
I would just take the opportunity to say it's been an honor, and I've learned a lot from you two, you've been mentors as I started on this board, and really feel it, I'm a little nervous or a little scared to be losing you, especially Deb, you have a great eye for detail and following through with policies, so it's going to be hard to fill that position.
Yes, to you both, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Any other items of information from the board?
We'll start with delegate assembly here, the fifth and sixth of this month. The two resolutions, one passed for the facilities funding per square foot, ninety to ten. However, the next one didn't go too well. I did speak, I put together a little speech on the test, you know, the June first, and that went down ten to ninety because they believed the state that they would get the test results out immediately. So we're just going to see. We're just going to see that Todd and other people, the staff, will be looking at that, see if the stuff will come out what they say they promised, so.
All right, thank you for your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to mention something I noticed in the consent agenda. There were several resignations, and I honor all those who have served the district, but one in particular, Ms. Margaret Lee, is retiring from the Faribault High School library, and I was fortunate to work with her for a number of years. And as a conscientious and exemplary employee, I would like to thank her for her time and service to this district.
All right, any other items from board members? I feel like Howard and Deb should have to say something.
For that, Deb.
It has truly been an honor to serve on the school board. I really appreciate the community and the support that they've given me. It's going to be hard. But on a good note, I have been approached by a blooming fairy resident to run the next IWA opening, so we'll see.
Yes, I think you should. I've had people that tell me that running for a school board is a thankless job, but I can report that it's anything but thankless. And I've had many people from the community and the staff express their appreciation for being on the school board, but I have to respond that the benefit was mine, and most principally because of the contact with the people, especially our staff. And I have a great deal of respect for our staff. And I would like to say that one of the things that we did during my four years that I'm most proud of is hiring Todd Sescr. And I think Todd has done a great deal to develop the trust with this community. He's a great facilitator. I'm very, very proud of the decision we made during my tenure in office here.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, and so I turn items of information over to Superintendent Sescr.
Okay, a couple of things that have been happening. Both Colleen, Meredith Starf and I have been out training folks on bowling, and we did the bus garage together, and we have a nice little PowerPoint that we put together, and we did some Q and As to teach them about the new bowling legislation, which is, it's pretty complicated, but I think we got through it. And we're going to do the food service now this Wednesday. We, I was fortunate enough to talk to the Faribault Futures class. Thanks, Ann Marie, for helping out that. Ann Marie's on that committee now to help with the Faribault Futures agenda throughout the entire year. And Dr. Parker and I spoke to the class last Thursday, and I thought it was very good, so. We had a big night superintendent meeting. A lot of things are happening. I would say pay attention to see what's happening in Albert Lee, to see what's happening with her year-long school. I'd be interested to see what's the final vote is going to end up being in December. And then, end up on a fun note, I went to the holiday concert at MSAB. As you know, I'm on that board now. And it was incredibly rewarding to see what the staff has done at MSBA to have those kids perform, not just perform, but perform at a pretty high level. There are some pretty talented young men and women at that school district, so it's very, very fun to go up there and watch that holiday concert. And that's all I have. Merry Christmas to everybody. Happy holidays.
Okay, and that brings us to some dates to remember. Starting with on January fifth, in the Faribault Middle School auditorium will be the organizational meeting for the school district at six-thirty P M. Is there a question? On January seventh, there will be a wellness meeting at three-thirty P M in the district office. On January twelfth at seven-thirty A M will be a finance meeting in the district office. And January twelfth at three-thirty P M will be the curriculum advisory committee meeting in the district office. January thirteenth at four-thirty P M will be the policy committee meeting in the district office. And on January twenty-sixth, at a time to be determined, will be our regular board meeting, location to be determined at our organizational meeting. With that.
May I?
Please.
Ann Marie, continuing ed committee was not on this list.
Yes, the Community Education Advisory Council will meet on January twentieth, starting at four.
January twentieth?
January twentieth at four. January twentieth, at four, I'm assuming in the district office?
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to adjournment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from either Deb or Howard. I have a motion.